It will get a little more exciting when I think all the kids find.
Okay, it's four o'clock. I will call the October 12th, um, Saline County City Commission meeting to order. I would ask staff for confirmation that Kansas Open Meeting Act required notices been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner France.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay. With that, would everyone who's able please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we will move into awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the month of October 2020 as Bullying Prevention Month in the city of Salina. Dominic Freeland, Gabriel Freeland, Andrew Grabber, Camille Grabber, Kira Hoffman, and Sophia Torres will read the proclamation.
Okay. Who's gonna start us?
Bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm intentionally directed at a person or group of people. And whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and through technology and... Whereas various researchers had concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence, affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually. And whereas thousands of Kansas and Kansas children and adolescents are affected by bullying annually. And... Whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems. And students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, and attending community activities. And... Whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors. And whereas children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now therefore, I'm Michael L. Hoppick, mayor hereby proclaim October 2020 as Bullying Prevention Month, and be it resolved. That schools, students, parents, recreation programs, religious institutions, and community organizations be encouraged to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our community safer for all children and adults.
Okay, thank you. You all did a very good job. Um, do you guys have anything planned as far as activities in the community or your schools for October? Please come forward.
Um, I do theater at, um, the Salina Community Theater, and, um, I play the ukulele with my school music teacher.
Okay, thank you. So, are there any special events dealing with bullying during the month of October? It's just a here.
Uh, we all got together with CAPS and made a video for the, for Vicki to show to all the kids at the school districts for to teach them about bullying and how it affects everyone.
Good. Yeah. During COVID, that's probably the best way to do it. So, thank you guys for, for all your hard work. I do have a resolution here signed. Does someone want to please come up and get it? Thank you guys very much for being here. Okay, that will lead us to 3.2.
Item 3.2, the month of October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Salina. Abby Hunter, victim advocate with D-VAC, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon. Okay. Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a widespread, preventable, public health problem impacting all demographics of Kansans, including the city of Salina. And whereas relationships are often counted as life's greatest treasures, and tragically, many are tarnished by one person's feeling of entitlement to power and control over the other, resulting in violence and fear. And whereas domestic violence abusers violate an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity with their intentional systematic use of financial, psychological, sexual, and physical coercive control and abuse. And whereas the U.S. Department of Justice reports domestic violence homicides comprise 14% of all homicides in the U.S., and that women are more than twice as likely as men to be killed by an intimate partner. The Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports the 37 domestic violence homicides were 25.3% of all homicides in Kansas in 2018. And whereas in Kansas in 2018, a domestic violence abuser murdered another person every nine days. A domestic violence abuser committed a violent act reported to law enforcement every 21 minutes, and law enforcement made an arrest due to domestic violence every 43 minutes. And whereas in the last year, D-VAC served 678 victims within our 10 counties, 435 of which were from Saline County. And yet these numbers do not accurately reflect the total number of domestic violence victims, as many were unable to access D-VAC during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic due to increased isolation. And whereas the governing body of Salina recognizes this violence is inconsistent with the city's values and cannot be ignored, excused, or tolerated. And whereas, in declaring this month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, I encourage all citizens to know the facts about domestic violence, to familiarize themselves with resources, to recognize subtle signs of control tactics, to act as safe support systems, to speak up against perpetrators of violence and any messages that inadvertently condone domestic violence, to get involved, to teach others and prepare future generations for healthy relationships, and to donate time or resources to their local domestic violence agency. Now therefore, if you would, proclaim the month.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I do see you have one event. Can you give us an idea of what you have going on in the month of October?
Absolutely. So, um, every Wednesday, uh, over the lunch hour, 12 to 1 approximately, I hop on Facebook Live to talk and educate about domestic violence. There are a couple of Fridays I've thrown in there because I just, I love to be on Facebook so much. Um, so hang out with me over the lunch hour. Any of those days, I'm gonna be talking about subtle tactics, what those look like, an honest look at abusers, understanding victim perspectives and choices, safety, and safely supporting victims, and lasting change. Um, in addition to that, this Sunday, that's what the flyer is for, we have a fundraiser at IHOP. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we have not been able to do our typical fundraisers, yearly fundraisers. We do a golf tournament and a casino night, but, um, for safety purposes, we chose not to do that. So this is kind of our compromise, our fundraiser. If you go to IHOP on Diamond Drive, North Ninth Street, and just mention our name, tell the table next to you to mention D-VAC, then 20% of proceeds will go to, to us. October 22nd, that's a Thursday, everybody wear purple and post about it on all your social media platforms to show support. The week of eight, um, the 18th through the 24th, that's what's called the Week of Action. Kansas Westland is going to be doing a clothesline project, which entails decorating T-shirts and hanging them up, showing all different kinds of, um, of tactics of domestic violence and what have you. And then October 30th, that's a Friday, Glow Yoga at 8:00 PM to support survivors, and that's at the Kansas Westland Student Center. So that's what we got. Hope to see everybody there.
Your 12 o'clock to 1 o'clock presentation on Facebook, what page is that on?
If you just go to the Domestic Violence, the D-VAC Facebook page, um, and follow us there, then you'll see, and your Facebook typically will give you a little notification that says, hey, Facebook is live, so, or D-VAC is live.
Want to make sure everybody knew where to go for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Hunter, I have a certificate for you.
Thank you for your work and thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah, can't do that now, I know, get your...
That's...
Thank you. It's a hard habit to break, isn't it?
It is.
Okay, with that, we will move into Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for someone to come forward and talk about something that is not on the agenda. Um, you have five minutes. If you come forward, please give us your, your name and where you're from. Okay. No, nothing for Citizens Forum. That will move us into the Consent Agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of October 5, 2020. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 20-7887, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement to lengthen the tolling period in the consent decree which relates to the former Schilling Air Force Base site.
Okay, is there an item a commissioner would like to have removed? If not, I would accept a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda, and noting that the minutes of October 5th were originally published with the error in them, and they've been corrected.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve consent agenda, item 6.1 and 6.2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 5-0. That will bring us to item 7.1.
Item 7.1, Resolution Number 20-7879, authorizing the mayor to execute an amended and restated sidewalk café license agreement with PB&amp;J Restaurants, Inc.
Okay, Ms. Riscull.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. As you'll recall, last week, we dealt with two resolutions before you. Resolution 20-7878, and then the one that we are addressing this evening, Resolution 20-7879. 20-7878 had to do with amending an existing resolution that addressed the placement and additional dimensional requirements for sidewalk dining license. Um, in doing that, we were able to move the, uh, clear path of travel from six feet to five feet, noting that that would work better overall in our newly designed downtown sidewalks, in addition to the other infrastructure that had been applied there, while still maintaining ADA compliant and being able to be an active sidewalk environment. Um, after analyzing the additional sidewalk dining licenses that we have approved, there's still one that is in violation or needs to be corrected, and that is the southern light post in front of Yaya's European Bistro at the hotel. Um, that issue is addressed through a proposed change to the license agreement. Code currently allows and has allowed that for those distances that are above four feet below that requirement, once six, now five, can receive a variation or an exemption from the city commission. Um, and it specifically highlights things like light posts, mailboxes, other necessary infrastructure that may create those pinch points but are essential in that sidewalk environment. Uh, after last week's meeting, the city commission asked us to further look at where a light post could be moved if an exemption to that rule would, was not the reasonable solution. And so staff has done further research and identified in graphics attached in today's packet where that new light post would move to if it did. Uh, staff also identified a cost of $3,370 to move that light post. So before you today, and as requested by the city commission, your alternatives are to approve Resolution 20-7879, amending the sidewalk café dining license agreement formally approved by the city commission on March 3rd, 2020 with PB&amp;J Restaurant, Inc., and formally authorize the exception of a light pole within the unobstructed walkway as allowed by Resolution 20-7878, that is less than five feet and more than four feet from the sidewalk dining area, or to approve Resolution Number 20-7879 with amendments the city commission deems appropriate, or three, postpone consideration of 20-7879 to a specified date and time to provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like to request, or four, vote to deny Resolution 20-7879 resulting in a noncompliance sidewalk, walkway, or five, make a motion directing staff to move the light pole to a location that resolves the violation. With that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay. Four of us were here last week, and so I guess I'll look to my right to start with Commissioner Davis. Do you have any questions?
Uh, questions? No, I have an idea of how to resolve it, but I'm, all my questions have been answered.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
Um, I wanted to start by saying, by thanking staff for, um, providing me with a copy of the, um, cafe's, um, license application, because it was, it was interesting to, to look through the diagrams. The, while the light posts didn't appear to be, um, marked in, um, in the actual plans, they were shown in, in the renderings, and I think it, um, is kind of revealing for our, our process. It's easy to see how that, um, broke down. I guess, a question for Mr. Skreg. Are we, were we planning to deal with this under this item or under other business? We'd talked last week about, um, the punch list of outstanding items that we've got concerns with downtown, or is that gonna occur at a later meeting?
Yeah, that's actually in the agenda planner for next week.
Okay.
Um, we've, staff's had some conversation with the contractor and others, gathering information, but we've calendared it for next week.
Okay.
Commissioner Hodges. Also, staff discussed one of the suggestions that you made last week on having visuals for when someone is trying to place their use, not just sidewalk dining, but others. So, in talking with engineering over the winter, we're gonna directionally analyze all those different sections to create kind of that graphic that you were hoping for. So if somebody, whether they're a busker, sidewalk dining, if a certain use just isn't possible in that built environment, which we'll be testing through the winter, and one, it's a ground truthing of do these measurements or the setbacks is we're proposing a code gonna work now that we actually have a built environment. So before we bring that to you in the spring, we'll know they work. But two, if there are certain sections that just, those uses aren't applicable, you would know that as an applicant by being able to look at these graphics. Essentially, you'll be able to see all of downtown on an aerial, and then we'll break down each block by north, south, east, and west sides of the block in kind of colored denotation like you were talking about, so you could see where you should place yourself. I think it'll help with compliance for all sides and just make it easier to use some of the code.
Thank you. I, yeah, it just seemed like something that, if you know right off the bat if you're looking at renting or purchasing a property, that you're not gonna be able to use it for, say, the sidewalk dining. Um, I noticed that, I didn't, um, I walked downtown this morning, and I noticed that a lot, since we're having the sidewalk dining being attached to the specific business, it does force traffic, pedestrian traffic onto the bricks. And some of the bricks, I, I don't know what ADA, um, guidelines are in terms of a slope, but it looked to me like there were an awful lot of sloped bricks that mean that it, it wouldn't be an appropriate passageway if there were sidewalk dining that took the, the existing concrete. Um, so that might, it might be something to keep in mind, too, um, some of those slopes on, on that. And then, um, I did spend some time watching people going back and forth downtown, and it was really interesting. Sadly, it wasn't just the, the south pole, but also the north pole. As people exited Starbucks, um, I think there were four different pairs that I watched. They all initially started side by side, and then they split around the pole, came back together, then split around the, the north pole. So, you know, when we're looking at, you know, what's a comfortable distance, um, that you wanna walk next to somebody, I guess it varies on the type of couple, but what we're providing didn't, obviously didn't feel comfortable to them. And I know that we've already adopted the, the five-foot ordinance. Um, the last thing I would love to have you look at, there were two obstructions, um, in, in front of that, on that corner. One, and I can send you a picture of it, is an actual, um, a round thing in the ground with a bolt sticking up that looked like it would be easy for somebody to trip, or if you have somebody who's visually impaired trying to find their way. And I think that it's probably a good idea to look where we have the sculpture tour sign mounted for that piece, because if you're not paying attention, the profile as you're walking north and south, especially south coming out of Starbucks, I mean, it's, it would be very easy to overlook it and, and catch your heel on it, or catch your toe on it. And, um, the sign looks great, but I think we might want to look at where we've got that located.
Well, we could possibly reach out to the Accessibility Advisory Board prior to bringing the final code to you guys, and having a discussion with them, maybe going over those graphics and seeing if, you know, where there's not an optimal place, highlighting on, you know, optimal routes, things like that. I mean, in my experience in working with downtowns and, and with compliance like that, it's, it's known that you're not always gonna be able to 100% have kind of the perfect width all the time in order to accommodate all these other things. So you start kind of trying to find where that's at. But I think the people maybe to best give us the feedback are those who are representing those individuals in addition to what we have in code. So the Accessibility Advisory Board might be an excellent source to have that discussion with.
I agree. I think that's a great idea.
Hey, any other, any other questions or comments? Okay, do we have any public comment?
Would it be okay for me to remove this?
It's fine with me.
Yeah, okay, thanks. A little distracting, and trying to talk with that is difficult at times. So, my name is John Blanchard. I live in Salina, Kansas. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and vice mayor for both, um, answering my email and getting ahold of me and having a nice conversation about some of the concerns that I have from a landscape architect's perspective on the streetscape and the placement of, of the light poles and, and respect to the pedestrian ways. I watched the meeting last week, and it seemed like we're arbitrarily changing our ordinance from six feet with the option of going five to four with your approval, which would have meant that every single one of these would have been, could have been approved without a change in the ordinance. I think the change in the ordinance is short sighted, and I'll tell you why. You don't really, from a site planning standpoint, you don't just make an ordinance or a guideline based on what other cities are doing. It'd be like in law or in medicine saying, you know, every case is the same, so we're gonna apply this law to this case, or we're gonna apply this diagnosis to all the patients. They're individuals. You know, we have, we have a unique situation here, and I think we created part of the problem, but we have basically 16 and a half feet from the face of the curb to, uh, the building. I don't know if you're, how familiar staff is with, um, the different zones of a sidewalk, but a sidewalk actually has four functional zones. You have a frontage zone, which is up against the building, and it allows for and accommodates the opening and closing of doors and, and movements right around the entries of buildings. You have a pedestrian zone, and, and our frontage zone is basically nothing. A lot of our pedestrian, our frontage zones are inset in a lot of the buildings that you, that you see. The pedestrian zone that we have is probably best visualized out there, if you walk the street, as the concrete area. It's eight foot six, eight foot six inches roughly wide. That is a main free space or pedestrian space, or different ways of, of looking at it, but that is the pedestrian zone. The third zone is a furnishing or furniture or service zone, and that's designated out in our streetscape by the bricks. It's really generous because it's six feet wide. And then you have a curb zone, which ours is two feet wide. And the reason why each individual community is different is because, like on a curb zone, not all curb zone, if Lawrence has it two feet wide, we don't adopt two feet wide just because Lawrence does. Lawrence might have 45 degree angle parking with 18 feet of depth for their parking. Ours happens to be 16 feet of depth and a, and a more steep parking angle. That means that the curb area accommodates for overhangs of bumpers that come into it. So you wanna make sure that your light standards are outside of that curb, out of that curb zone. And so our curb zone isn't necessarily gonna be the same as any other, any other community. The same thing goes for our furnishing zone. Uh, we have light fixtures, we have benches, we have planters, planter urns, all these other things in our furnishing zones. And that's also an area that is designed to accommodate loading and loading and unloading, because we not only have hotels downtown, but we have a lot of things, restaurants that generally people arrive in groups, and also people that are shopping that sometimes load and unload, you know, on the, on the curb and, and so on. So, in addition to seasonal changes, you have snow storage a lot of times.
About another minute, if you could?
Uh, yeah, I appreciate that. Hopefully, I'm not boring anybody here, but I'm, I'm just trying to, trying to kind of get to the, to some of the considerations. Um, as far as the light fixture that goes, I think that both of the light fixtures at, at the Yaya's probably need to be moved to accommodate the pedestrian. The problem is, is that the dining area takes up the entire eight foot six inch pedestrian ways, places the, all the traffic over on the six foot furnishing way and the two foot, um, curb zone. And the problem with that is why you wanna look at it at a case by case basis is that the north, the south one in particular is four feet two inches wide. You have that four feet two inches, but to go around to the other side of the curb, you only have 20 inches. Now, we have an aging community, we have people, you know, if people have disabilities and so on, we really don't wanna force them around there. So the best solution would be, because we're not gonna get rid of the outdoor dining, uh, but to relocate that light fixture, and you run into kind of the same issue on the north, uh, light as well. So my recommendation with you is, is for you, is that certainly I think the, the outdoor dining, it looks nice. I think it adds vibrancy. It's, it's well done there. They did the best they could with it. Um, but we really, ideally, we would have had more coordination between the site planners for the hotel and the, and the HDR, but I think that, I, I think our, I think our furnishing zone is overly generous. Um, and so just for safety considerations, I would ask that, I'd hate to see someone slip and fall off of that curb and, and get seriously injured. Plus, when you start forcing them out in that curbway, that curbway is where cars are pulling in, and their, and their bumpers have the potential to conflict. So hopefully you'll, um, when you revisit this zone earlier, I, I would really be careful about, in looking at a case by case basis, when you do grant a four foot wide, that maybe you have four feet and at least three feet on the other side, but, but make sure you're accommodating for a safe pedestrian space. And thank you again for the phone call and, and for you as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion or action.
Just one, one question after Mr. Blanchard's comment. The light pole that's not in, that's not referenced in this matter, is there a concern about the spacing around that? Just, and I, I'm necessarily looking up, up here, but anyone else? I mean, is it in a situation where it should need to be considered for moving as well?
Depending on...
Based on these other measures? That one is five, I don't...
That's what I was trying to find, was that dimension.
Yeah, from last... Yeah, from last week, that was five foot, and I didn't bring my...
There, I can have it in just a second, I'm scrolling, sorry. But it is, it is compliant, it is in the five-foot range.
And I'm, and I'm down there quite a bit. I've been to yah-yahs and Starbucks several times a week. And just today, because I, again, been paying attention, the south one is tight, that you can go to across. The other one, in fact, today, there was, this morning, there was two, I call them elderly ladies, probably a little older than I am, so, but they were doing, they were doing sculpture tour, and I watched them, and they both walked between the fence and the light pole with no problem. They were, had just finished at the sculpture in front of the hotel there, and were headed south. So that one's not quite six foot, but I think it has sufficient width that I don't have any problem with that one. The four-foot one is a little tight, it does meet ADA, that was the only reason that last week I felt like it was okay, but...
If I might weigh in, the north one is, has enough space because it's a little bit offset.
Offset, yeah.
It looks a little different. I don't want to say strange, but I mean, you can tell that you're going to have to kind of weave through it. The south one, I went down there again and looked again, and, you know, it is just uncomfortable. I look at that and I just, you know, and I know it meets ADA standards and all of that, but it, to me, it feels uncomfortable, and I think that maybe some of the things Mr. Blanchard talks about explains some of that in terms of the zones and the spacing that's required. But I'm still where I was last week. I think that one should move.
That one, the north pole is five foot, four inches. The south pole, which we're talking about at the moment, is four foot, three inches. That five foot, four is the same as the one in front of Blue Sky. So if that one is an issue, we probably need to look at others that are in that same category.
My question would be, we're looking at moving the light pole, is there a reason that it needs to be moved? Or we just, do we just take, take it down and not move it? Just remove it?
One of the things that staff recognized, yes, of course, we could take it down, but lighting in that area, there's quite a bit of ambient light right in front of the hotel, but we could use additional light towards that corner, and that's that relocation portion. And you'll notice too, in the aerials and graphics provided, it would actually then mirror across the street.
I saw that.
So I don't think it'll look out of place to move it, we already own it. So otherwise, we have to find someplace to store it if we're just going to take it down. And that location would provide greater light, I think, from a safety perspective. It's always nice to have where you have pedestrian crossing and increase greater light down that area.
Are the hubs or the skirts at the bottom of the poles fungible? Could you change it? Could you remove them? They're probably 18 inches, I would imagine, diameter, so you could maybe cover eight or nine inches in either of those spots, if the pole's straight up and down like the light pole on the corner is, it's attached by the bolts.
That I do not have an answer to. I don't know if Dan Stack is down here, if he might be able to address, you know, changing out the base of the light, if that's something that would accommodate greater space, but that is not something I'm aware of. And if the city commission wishes so, we could do more research on that.
I think you'd probably lose some of the aesthetics of the other poles being that way, so...
And then the, and the other disadvantage of not having that wide base, if you're bringing a motorized scooter or wheelchair through there, if that wheel hits the base, it's just going to bounce off. If it hits the pole itself, it's, I mean, it's going to be an abrupt collision. Just looking at those pictures, there really isn't, you know, much space on the, between that pole and the curb. If a scooter is occupying most of that four feet, you really have no choice if you just happen to pass at that same point. You'd really be standing in the, in the street, and you just hope someone pulling into the space is doing so with their eyes open. Or you, or their bumper may actually be up over the curb at that point.
And not to discount the concern, but that presumes that people don't just pause and navigate that narrowing kind of reasonably amongst them. The assumption that you're going to go out in the street is kind of a conscious decision that you've chosen not to wait however many seconds it would take for them, let someone pass through.
Well, it used to be, but it's hard to walk and text at the same time now, so folks unfortunately put their lives in danger because they continue to text. But, yeah, my opinion would be fairly simple. I appreciate all the discussion you had last week. Sorry I couldn't be part of it. Actually, no, I'm not, but, you know, if, if, from the builder's perspective, the plan was submitted and we reviewed it, I mean, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands things we've had to review for this, but, you know, if one or two slipped through, you know, that's a pebble, not a, not a boulder in the road. You know, if we approved it and it's in the wrong spot, I would just say that we pay it's not a huge amount of money to move it out of the way and put it in its more ideal location. I would not want to weaken the ordinance for the distance. I mean, going from six to five is, yeah, it's still a foot more than ADA requirement, but, you know, if you get down to five, then next thing you know, you're going to be four foot, six, and next thing you know, it's going to be four foot, one. But if you're going to stick with five, then we really got to stick with five. And I would just say, move the pole at our expense.
Okay, was there any other public comment? Okay, if not, I would accept a motion from one of the commissioners, if someone has one.
I hope I worded this correctly, but I don't, if I'm going to select the option of five, I do not need to reference resolution number 20. That's correct, okay. Okay, I move that we direct staff to move the south light pole, if that's enough of a description.
I think we know which one you mean.
All right. To a location that resolves the violation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to move the south light pole to a location that resolves the violation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
That passes four to one. Okay, that will lead us to Development Business 8.1.
Item 8.1, Resolution Number 20-7889, consider request for an exception to Section 42-63A of the zoning ordinance to allow the construction of an enclosed walkway over a public utility easement at the Tony's Pizza Plant Site at 3019 Scanlon Avenue.
Okay, this has Dean on it, but I don't see Dean.
It might be in route.
Or we could just have another staff person present, it looks pretty straightforward.
It is, I think it is.
It might be in route, I'm sorry.
He's coming, okay. Doesn't walk as fast as he used to.
Hate to say it, but I'm not in my prime anymore. This is a request that comes to you from Burns, McDonald Engineers on behalf of the Schwan's Group, and they're requesting that you grant an exception to allow an enclosed walkway to be constructed over a public utility easement at the Tony's Pizza Plant Site. And we provided a couple drawings in your packet, and you can see from the background information that ever since the Tony's Pizza Plant was located there, there have been utility conflicts on the west side of the plant that have been dealt with, with various vacations and actions taken by the city commission, and most recent being in 2018. But there is a major public water line and a major AT&amp;T fiber optic line, and the 35-foot north-south utility easement was retained to protect those. In reviewing the preliminary plans for the Schwan's project rise, we pointed out that the connecting link between the two buildings was going to be placed over the easement, and we currently have a footing and foundation permit that is pending. And so this has come before you to see if you will authorize the construction as proposed. We pointed out that the utility easement in this location is 35 feet wide. It's narrowed down from its original extent, and the rationale for trying to protect public utility easements is to preserve access from utility providers so they can get at their lines to do necessary maintenance. We have forwarded this to all the area, local and franchise utilities. We didn't receive any objections, but we did receive two comments, and the comments from our Director of Utilities about the need for a sleeve to protect the city's public water line, and also a comment from AT&amp;T for a similar sleeve to protect their fiber optic line. And so those utilities, if those protections are put in place, don't have any objection to the proposal. So we've tried to provide for you on page three some possible findings, primarily to try to distinguish this from future cases. We hope that placement of buildings and easements is an exception, not a general practice, and so we've provided some possible findings for you to take into consideration in our report. So in terms of your options this evening, you could approve the attached resolution that would authorize the placement of this 10-foot-wide enclosed walkway in the existing 35-foot utility easement. You could postpone consideration of this request if there's additional information from the applicant or staff you feel is needed to reach a decision or to allow staff to modify the resolution, or you could decline to approve the attached resolution and provide further direction to staff and the applicant. If you were to decline to approve the resolution, then they would have to come up with an alternate design. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that the commission might have.
Questions?
With the protective sleeve, and I'm trying to visualize, saw the diagram, is this is large enough that you, from either end of that 10 feet, you can reach in?
Essentially, the sleeve provides a protection, and then it allows them to go in, and if there's a section directly underneath the walkway, they can pull that, that section out through the sleeve and to get at that section for whatever they would need to do.
Which is a really good point. Not only does it protect the utility, it helps prevent the possibility that our work might disrupt the structure that's being built on top of it.
So is there like a lot of space between the sleeve and the utility?
Yes, there is extra space, I'm not sure...
Yeah, the width of the sleeve exceeds the width of the pipeline, and so...
But it's not so large, you're not building like a tunnel around the pipe?
No, no.
Okay.
It's just enough, enough so that they can slide the section out to get at it without having to jackhammer the floor of the walkway or anything like that in case there was a need to get at that section. The good thing about this is that it's only 10 feet wide and the easement's 340 feet long, so it's a very narrow section. We're not putting an entire building over the easement.
And just hypothetically, if the connector between the two buildings was up in the air, let's just say 15 feet up in the air, would you still need permission?
We would, we would still, still be spanning the easement, and we would still bring it to you. Obviously, the, it wouldn't have footings and things like this will have, and there'd be a little less concern, but there actually was, I didn't note it in my report, but there actually is such a structure that spans former jumper road. It's an elevated conveyor, and it crosses a utility easement, and that was authorized by the city commission at that time. We initially, in some of the initial discussions, we were led to believe that this was going to be an aerial walkway, but they decided it needed to connect it at ground level. So they have been coordinating closely with Martha Tasker, the Director of Utilities, on protecting her water line, and she feels comfortable with this approach.
I'm speculating a little bit, but if they're elevated, we still might require it to be sleeved, just because we have to get a backhoe or a piece of equipment in to do the work we need to do on the utility. We may still have clearance issues, and then it may also create an elevator requirement for the building owner to accommodate that change in elevation for their employees.
I want to say I appreciate the clarification, because when I was reading the material, my first thought was it was an elevated walkway, because in some of the conceptual materials, they had a drawing that showed an elevated crossing, which I think is the one you referred to. And then as you look at the Burns and McDonald cover page, they refer to it as a proposed connecting tunnel, and then I thought, well, is this going to be an underground passageway? So it's, it was confusing, but it is going to be a surface?
I called it, I initially, as they did, I initially called it a connecting tunnel. The city manager pointed out to me that that might lead you to believe that it was underground, so I changed the terminology to enclosed walkway.
Okay, so it's going to be like a sidewalk, but it's going to have a structure around it to protect the users from the elements.
It's set on ground level, have enclosed sides, and be climate-controlled, or at least climate-protected, so that people can go back and forth between the two plant buildings.
I'm glad I'm not the only one who is a little bit confused by exactly the way this was going to look.
Well, I, when I got the application, I asked them for an elevation drawing so I could see how far above the ground it was, and then they told me it's not going to be above the ground, it's going to be on the ground, and that, that did not match up with some of their earlier concepts, so...
Can the fiber optic cable, if there's a problem five feet in?
Yeah, I think it's sleeved as well, isn't it?
Yeah, the fiber optic cable is going to be sleeved as well.
How do you work on something that's five feet in?
I don't know if they put play in it, if it's a function of a break, I guess you pull it out and pull it again.
Yeah, they're, they would do the same thing, that they would, they would use the protective sleeve, then they would pull it out through the sleeve, and if there was a break somewhere under that 10 feet, they would make the repair and then slide it back, you know.
So I'm assuming both utilities are satisfied with this option?
Yes, I've got...
From a technical perspective, I don't want to outguess them, but if they're happy.
Yeah, they, they did not object as long as those sleeves were provided, and just, it's not exactly the same, but for your benefit, the new, the rebuilt Sonic Drive-In downtown on Santa Fe, there's an eight-inch sewer line that runs underneath that building, because that used to be an alley where it was built, and there's a protective sleeve over that sewer line, the same concept, so that that section of pipe could be slid out from underneath the restaurant if there was ever a need to get at it. So this is a similar approach, but not as wide as the Sonic Drive-In restaurant.
And a similar approach is taken crossing rivers and railroads as well, so it's not uncommon, something our utilities used to working with.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for staff? Any comments from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hoppeck, I move that we approve Resolution Number 20-7889, a request for an exception to Section 42-63A of the zoning ordinance to allow the construction of an enclosed walkway over a public utility easement at the Tony's Pizza Plant Site at 3019 Scanlon Avenue.
Second, we have a motion, a second, to approve Resolution Number 20-7889. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes five zero. Thank you very much, Mr. ...
Thank you, and we will communicate that to the project designers.
Okay, with that, I bring it back to the commission. Is there any other business to be brought before us?
I do have something that I'd like to spend a little time talking about. Has to do with our strategic planning process, and of course, we did not, normally, we meet with a facilitator of some sort in the spring, and we come up with a, with a plan, and it's, it's normally pretty general and has some commendable goals, but we've never taken it a step further to actually talk about things we want to do or things we want to change specifically. And what I'm suggesting is... And what I'm suggesting is that we spend the next, you know, five months or so before the budget process, maybe one study session a month, trying to build on that strategic plan and come to the table and when, when each of us with a couple of things, two or three, that we'd like to specifically happen, be able to set some priorities for those things and then give the staff a basis to, to work those into the budget process. I do have, I have actually written this up and I've included a sample proposal that's based on our upcoming discussion of the community engagement program, just as a way of a sample. It's fairly, I spent some time on it and I wouldn't expect all the suggestions to be this detailed, but I've spent a lot of time thinking about this particular issue, so I was able to add quite a, quite a little bit to it. And I, I'd suggest we think about that and maybe have it as, as an action item on a future agenda as far as things that we might like to, a process we'd like to go through. It's, it's always been frustrating to me to look at strategic plans that you do and they sound good and they go on the shelf and every, you know, but they're not very good at generating proactive action and I'd like to see us try to, try to change that.
Good point.
Thank you. Thanks for doing the work. I think that strategic planning is kind of a tricky thing to actually like implement and I look forward to taking a look at, at your proposals because I think it, probably to a person, and maybe it's just me, every strategic planning session that we've done, it has its positives, but I never feel like at the end of the time that we're...
That we're going anywhere.
Yeah, exactly, that we're all pulling.
Now, now it does position us to look at proposals that come to us and, you know, make a determination of whether they conform or not, but again, that's reactive and I would like to see us take a step forward and, and try to, try to move us into the direction we'd like to go.
Good points.
Staff does have one additional item. Commissioners, you discussed the upcoming forum and use of allowing signs and whether they're allowed in our meetings in general as well as they're, whether they're allowed or going to be allowed at the forum. And we tasked the City Legal Council with kind of researching the First Amendment aspects of that, the public forum aspects of that. I think Mr. Bankson's prepared to give you a little bit of an update and with that, if we could get some direction from you, if you'd like us to proceed, we can try to be prepared for the upcoming forum.
Yeah, that'd be good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, the policy question that would be helpful to have just your thoughts on today as we advance the research comes down to the extent to which your thought is that in relation to handheld signs, placards or anything that one might be able to hold in the context of this meeting location or in a venue such as the T-PAC, whether you wish to speak in terms of regulating those within the meeting room or whether the objective is to prohibit those. Now, briefly, as far as the legal context, we have identified what appears to be the most directly on point case on that question. It arose in the context of a school board in Louisiana and it was decided by the Louisiana Supreme Court and was appealed to the United States Supreme Court. The United States Supreme Court did not accept the case. They actually dismissed it and the commentators indicate that that is generally viewed as a level of concurrence in the, in the State Supreme Court's decision. So be that as it may, that is the most direct case that we have and in that case, we were dealing with a form of time, place and manner regulation, which in this case involved precluding the signs from the meeting room. And as you might imagine, the elements that are involved are whether there is a significant government interest and one of the considerations, of course, is whether there are alternative means for communicating the same information, whether that be orally, whether that be in writing, or whether that be alternate means of utilizing the handheld signs. Those handheld signs are constitutionally protected, as you might imagine, by the First Amendment, so that's why it's an important consideration. The current language in your agenda memo where the current prohibition is referred to, it speaks in terms of the building. So depending on your policy direction, I think our next step would be to, in that we're in the context of regulating time, place and manner and given the significance of the two locations where your meetings might occur, I think we want to be sure that we advise you and think in terms of not only within the meeting room, but in the context of these other locations. I have had an opportunity to, Todd Miller was kind enough to provide me with a copy of the bylaws that I would imagine that Commissioner Hodges and Mr. Davis have as a result of their service on the board and any of you that might have served over the years, but I think that's, depending on where you wish to have us look in a, as far as what you wish to occur in this room, I think the next step then would be to see how we might be able to implement that wish.
Thoughts to the Commissioners?
The current written policy in the second sentence, you know, on our agenda here is that signs will not be allowed into the building. So that, if I just take that at face value, there's no way to get in this room without coming in the building. So it would, I would think should be a moot point at that point, but then you have to define what's a sign and what's a handout. And, or if I write something on a T-shirt, is that a sign or?
That is a consideration, but depending on where you all wish to go, that, as you might imagine, is a somewhat harder analysis, frankly, when you're speaking about something that someone is wearing.
I think it's you. Come a little closer to you, Mike.
I'm sorry. As opposed to, as opposed to something that someone is carrying in the form of a sign, but yes, that's a potential issue depending on the extent to which we might wish to, to regulate that form of expression.
And obviously, I brought this up, but part of it was because confused, we, in our order of business, we have signs will not be allowed in the building. We've been allowing them ever since I've been on the Commission, so we either need to remove that or we need to adhere to it and I'm not sure where the Commission likes to, wants to go with that, I guess, is part of the question.
Well, you know, to address Commissioner Davis to some extent, I'm, I'm not too worried about shirts. I mean, that's, you know, but I, I do have concerns that someone holding a sign and you get 20 of those out there and it is very distracting as far as being able to conduct business in a reasonable way. It's also, I think, can be intimidating to those who might want to speak on the other side of that issue. Maybe they're not quite as organized or whatever and it gives the whole place kind of the air of a political convention or a demonstration. I have no problem at all with designating an area outside the entrance to the building where folks can express that form of speech, but I don't think it is consistent with what our objective is here in our meetings, which is to give everybody an unimpeded ability to speak to their, their feeling, free of intimidation from others in the room. It's the same reason that we don't permit, you know, booing and cheering and that kind of thing. It's just not conducive to being open in that way. Outside, you know, outside the building, outside the entrance, I have no problem. I understand it's a form of speech and that, that people have every right to express their opinions to folks who are walking in and out. So I mean, I mean, that's, that's where I am. I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned where it takes us if we start permitting that on a regular basis.
I'm, I'm in the same place and, and you know, once you start with a sign, it's like an arms race. I mean, how do you, how do you regulate any kind of allowance? I would suggest that maybe we need some language in there that even addresses shirts. I mean, there must be something, some level where things become so egregious that it becomes too big of a statement, but...
Several years ago, I'm doing this from memory, I forget what the topic was, but, and I forget who, who the mayor was then, but it was announced that, you know, signs could not be left up facing the Commission. If you came up to the podium and you wanted to demonstrate something or show something on a sign, you could use it as a visual aid, but once you sat down, it should be turned around, put against the wall, just so it would not be a visual distraction for the Commissioners looking, looking at. But that's only if the signs get as far as coming through the door.
I don't think we need those as well. I mean, as the City Manager mentioned, there's many ways to communicate your thoughts and they can submit something in a visual form to the clerk, they can email us, they can call us.
You arrange to have it showing up on the screen, there are ways to accommodate that.
Would it be appropriate to change that wording that says signs will not be allowed into a building where a City Commission meeting is being held? That would, that would handle, whatever do we have to outline, studies sessions, open forums, Commission meetings?
I think certainly when we're finished, there should be a certainly more extensive statement, wherever you all wish to ultimately be, assuming there's something that addresses signs and that we are regulating time, place and manner in some measure, I think we want to document that in a way that anybody would, reading that would understand the governmental interest being served and why and how it is being done. So yes, I think, I don't think just tweaking that language is where we ultimately want to be. I think you'll probably want a resolution addressing this matter ultimately.
And with respect to the governmental purpose, I think it can be easily articulated, as Commissioner Frandl was describing, in terms of it being disruptive, but the, when you think about a disruption of sightlines, disruption of the, just the decorum of the meeting, one item that occurs to me is flags. We've seen that recently.
I had assumed that those would be included with the signs.
Yeah, I think we may, you know, when we say signs, it may need to be signs, flags, banners and other devices intended to, and we can work on that wording, but as Mr. Bankson said, the policy question that we're wanting from you this evening is just, is that the direction you want to head? If you do, then we can prepare a resolution as quickly as next Monday for your consideration.
I, I think that's the direct, after, after seeing the behavior at, at that public study session and especially with the political climate being as charged as it is, I know that I've communicated with Mr. Skreg about an incident on the Iron Street Bridge and Commissioner Davis a couple of weeks ago referenced that one of the speakers had been struck intentionally or not intentionally by a flag after he was done speaking and leaving and anything that we can do to eliminate that potential kind of politically charged, aggressive interaction with people, then, then I'm for, because you just don't, you don't know where it's going to escalate from there and it, and it's not necessary for people to, to share their opinions with us. It's just not necessary.
It's bothered me for a long time with the breed specific item we had. I mean, we've had people bringing signs in and they intentionally, I think, like said, they, they sit up front, they, they make sure they're on the camera and they have them towards you and it was, it was somewhat, you know, and that's why I've been asking about this, because I think we've been ignoring this and, and to me, either, either abide by your rules or you get rid of them because there's nothing that, that's more confusing for, whether it's other Commissioners or at least for the mayor, when you're trying to enforce something and, and we haven't, it's hard to enforce something we haven't been enforcing, so I think we do need a resolution. I think we need to, to, to try to be a little more specific about what we are and are not going to allow and then be consistent with it. That's the, the main thing, so.
That seems like consensus. The staff will prepare something for your consideration on Monday and you can take final action at that point.
As a sort of practical thing, how would that be enforced in your eyes? Would we have a police officer present?
Well, I can, I can tell you right now that if, if we have a resolution and we have any kind of sign that comes into this, this room or the room where we're having a meeting, I will ask them to take that out into the hall and if they don't, we have a gentleman that will help them.
And, you know, if we extend this to other meetings, that we don't necessarily have police presence at all those meetings, they can still adjourn the meeting and request backup or they can adjourn to another time and regroup in anticipation of, you know, people that don't want to comply. So they, I think we have options. We will definitely need to provide some direction to our staff that support different boards and Commissions as well as the chair people of those Commissions.
What you would be working on now include the broad definition of signs, banners, flags and where it blends into, for lack of a better term, handouts?
Yeah, I think the City Attorney and I need to speak a little bit, but what's occurring to me is any medium intended to communicate a message while in the audience or, you know, while the meeting is otherwise ongoing, we can work on the, the description of that, but as you said, we're providing an alternate means to make a point with you as the governing body by way of public comment, so I think pretty much all other forms where someone's trying to interrupt your deliberations by conveying a message to you as they're sitting in the audience is, is that decorum that you're trying to maintain, so we'll see what we can come up with in the way of descriptive language.
Personally, I don't have a problem with T-shirts. I'm more concerned with things that can be held.
I don't know if anybody noticed, but the young people today on the bullying proclamation had T-shirts.
They did.
You know, and that's...
My biggest concern is they show up not anticipating and I guess they could turn their shirt inside out, but then that one may catch people by surprise.
Well, you've hit upon what is the more complex issue. Anything that we've been talking about generally is content neutral. When you're speaking about, we're not deciding what handheld signs folks are able to exhibit and not, we're speaking of a regulation that would eliminate certain forms of that at certain times. So that, that is what makes the clothing items a harder question, is that you presumably begin inherently making content-based distinctions.
And to build on that a little bit, and this, I'm not asking for direction on this this evening, but we've had this conversation before too, that our approach to proclamations is that we're content neutral about those because it's kind of treated as a public forum. And every now and then, whether it's an elected official or a citizen, I get asked, do we approve them all? Do we... asked, do we approve them all? Do we, do we exercise any discretion? And our approach has been, from a content neutral basis, we don't. So that one may actually be a little bit harder to solve.
Come up and give your name and.
Yeah, my name's Will Heaney. Basically, I was just listening to this and thinking that it's, yeah, I'm all for First Amendment rights and making sure everybody has a chance to speak their mind and everything. But I think he was right is that this meeting is supposed to be open to everybody. It's conducive to be open to everybody. And anytime you have anything where it's conflicting and may have any kind of detrimental thing to where they can't come here or feel like they can speak their mind, then you've got a problem because this is supposed to be open to the entire public of the city. I'm thinking to myself is that, and I don't know if it bailed this part of federal, but the fact is, is that when you're polling places, you have to be 10 feet away from, the reason being is, is because you want to keep it conducive to people are free to free, go in there and vote as they wish. And the same thing here, you know, to feel like you can come in here and speak your mind as you wish and not feel, you know, any kind of detrimental kind of thing going on, you know. So I, so I trust myself is polling places, they, they're 10 feet, you know. You can have all the signs you want, you know, but it has to be 10 feet away.
You don't have to run that gauntlet to get in the building that way.
Yeah, you know, and, but that's what I'm saying. But the idea is though, that in that place where the polls are actually, you know, it's a free area to be able to do and think whatever you want. So.
Could you, could you give us your name again? I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm Will, my, my name's Will Heaney.
Okay, thank you very much, Will. Appreciate your input.
Not at all, yeah.
Thank you.
No, I'm just.
Yep, so. Okay, any other business?
I can just put the city clerk on the spot. Do you happen to know what day the advanced voting opens up upstairs? Is it 13th?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth?
Yeah, I think this, what's the day, 12?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. I believe it's Wednesday.
Oh.
Nineteen?
Eighteenth?
See, somebody's back. Check your calendar because we don't seem to know.
I just seem to feel like I think they were saying they were sending out the ballots on the 14th.
Yeah, so I don't know. I don't know why I was thinking.
So just, I guess, check your calendars, wherever you get your news from, and, and know that, that service is available, which makes it a whole lot easier to, to cast a vote.
Thank you, you vote.
Okay, with that, I accept a motion to adjourn.
Move or adjourn?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will see everyone next week.